In the future, maybe for next year.
All right. So, subcommittee got this train rolling. I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, June 11 regular meeting of the school committee. Can we stand for the pledge of allegiance? The flag is over my shoulder. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Then can we take a moment of reflection, certainly remembering the loss that took place this weekend celebrating graduation in the town of Portsmouth and those that were injured in the event. Our hearts go out to those families and certainly their memories will be held with us during this difficult time moving forward. Thank you all for that. I will consider a meeting to enter -- or excuse me, consider a vote to enter into executive session under RIGL 42-46-5A2 and RIGL section 42-46-5A1. So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can you just read the statement that any employees to be discussed have been notified? Is that on the agenda?
It's on. Yep.
Hold on, is it on this?
I have to pull it right over here for you.
Oh, good. Well, thank you. Please note that any person who is to be discussed in an executive session has been notified in writing in advance of this meeting and has been given the opportunity to have such discussion in open session pursuant to RIGL section 42-46-5A1. Thank you, Mariah. With that, I will turn it over to Sean.
We're going to reconvene in open session. I will say that there were no votes taken in open session and I will consider a motion to seal the minutes of, excuse me. There were no votes taken in executive session and I will consider a motion to seal the minutes of executive session. Do I have a motion?
So, most.
Do I have a second? All in favor of sealing the minutes to executive session?
Aye.
Aye. The minutes are sealed, that is unanimous, how they vote. Excellent, do I, onto item four, consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve items four, one through four, five of the consent agenda?
So, most.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Michael, say aye.
Yeah.
Okay, just make sure. That's a five oh vote. Public input, is there any public input? I do see some faces in the crowd. All right. Thank you for coming out tonight, it's a gorgeous afternoon. All right, Principal McKinnon, spotlight on excellence, the grade eight year end activities.
Fantastic, couple of things to get through, first of all, the first screen you'll see up there. Mr. AI, who is the, runs, helps to run our green team, has a little report up here. He's just interesting to see, twenty-four, twenty-five screen here. We have composted close to four tons of food.
Hey, yeah! And, well done! That's pretty remarkable.
It's, that's pretty, and about six tons since we started, I think, I can't remember exactly, but I believe it was the previous year. And it might have been sometime around the big earmark, you know, we started doing that.
Yeah.
So, those are all good things, another good thing, the plastic wrappers, you know, you get those little apple slices that come out. And the wrappers that those things come in. We have composted or recycled close to, I mean, each box is thirty-seven pounds and they get, they get filled up. So, again, keeping stuff out of our infill. I think that's great. Next slide, Mike, John, excuse me. This was a picture of our year end, or I should say, end of state assessment time period we took at the Longplex in Tivon. We had close to a hundred kids who participated, you can see them all in that picture. We had the opportunity to roller skate, roller blade, we had a field for an hour and a half and a basketball court for two hours. And we also had the bounce houses for another two hours. And they had a great time, the people at Longplex were fantastic, they gave us more time, didn't really say anything, so that was, that was really nice. I want to shout out Lori Doherty and the Secana PTO for basically feeding everybody.
Great work.
They had a great time. Next slide, this was our seventh grade engineering expo that took place about two weeks ago. And the seventh graders picked, one of, there were seventeen different sustainable development goals that they, they had in their engineering expo. This is run by Ms. Brazil, who was our seventh, eighth grade science teacher. Kids did a fantastic job and it's also, it's always great seeing them all dressed up.
Yeah.
Next slide, this was reading week, which took place right at the end of May. Each day had, I think it was the week coming back from Memorial Day. And each day had a theme to it, as you can see, crazy sock day, read my t-shirt. The last day, bottom right-hand corner, you could see, I thought it was interesting, we had the entire school in there and it was buddy reading. And you could see the older kids with the younger kids and for a gym to have about three hundred people and for it to be pretty quiet was, was pretty amazing. It was good. Field trips, a lot of them, a lot of stuff been going on with all our classes. Work from the top and work our way around clockwise, that was the trip to Plymouth Patuxet, which is the old Plymouth plantation. The second picture looks like it was a trip to, was Simmons Mill with our second and third grade. Bottom right-hand corner is historical society with fifth grade. The next two pictures look like they're from Buttenwood Park and then our fourth graders were at the state house, it was last Monday, they were there. This past week, last week, we had our spring band and chorus concert. Shout out to our teachers, Ms. Oriole and Mr. Russo for putting on quite a show, kids, kids did a fantastic job. I thought our MVPs of that were our fourth grade band, I thought they played outstanding and I think Mr. Russo felt the same way. They really, really started to commit to their own, starting to get into some eighth grade activities coming up, actually today is field day. You see the green shirts, again, thank you PTO for getting the t-shirts, which is a tradition around Wilbon Man School where kids sign each other's t-shirts. And the PTO also supplied us with some ICs at the halftime, which was a great pick-me-up for everybody. Kids had a great time, we had great weather, we postponed the date, it was supposed to take place yesterday and obviously with the rain we couldn't do it. And we were lucky, it was a picture-perfect day. This is a picture of our, next slide is a picture of our eighth grade class trip to DC, I believe it was the fourteenth, fifteenth and sixteenth. This is something that is run by Mr. DeLeo, who was in the audience today. We refuse, thank you, Mr. DeLeo. And, excuse me, and Ms. Mary Elizabeth Miller. As you can see, the kids get an opportunity to see, you know, all the sites, historical sites around, around our nation. And for some of them, you know, as we know, it's their first time ever on a plane ride. But they had, they had an absolute great time and I think they have a truly great perspective of the greatest capital in the world. Let's see, any pictures in there of, I mean, I think the bottom left-hand corner, if you can see it, I think that might have been their ghost tour, does that sound right? In DC, kids had a, had a great time with that. Next slide, I want to recognize, you can see Luke Gaggen in the center in the left-hand corner there, left-hand side. Luke was a Billy Michelle Student Leadership Award winner for the state of Rhode Island. He and his family, one member of his family had an all-expense-paid trip to New Orleans, Louisiana to participate in the leadership clinic that they had down there. Just a great weekend for Luke and his family. Billy, Billy Michael was a, he was a young kid during World War Two and he helped his school raise all metal, recycled metal to be used in the war effort. And that's actually Billy Michelle there in the picture, he's still alive to this day. But, so he was there, they had just a great opportunity down there with the group. Last Friday, Melissa McCarthy, who was a nineteen eighty-four graduate of WMS, she contacted us sometime in January and said they would like to kick off the glass ball project with our eighth graders. Talking to Dr. Mitchell, she was on board, so they, we had Friday, she came out with a friend of hers and they, they hid the balls, not very difficult out in the playground for the kids to find. So, our eighth graders were the first ones to really kick off the LC three fifty, three hundred and fiftieth anniversary. I think for some of them, when we told them that Little Compton is a hundred years older than the United States of America, they were like, what? They were truly amazed, we also had our, it was, I say end of the year, it usually takes place sometime in February, March, but we did it June sixth. And that was the faculty-student basketball game, I think the students paid the referees and they won, they won that. Handily. We didn't train for it. And finally, let's see, finally, the last picture, this was our eighth grade dance, dinner dance that took place this past Monday. It was at Secana Vineyards, it was quite the spectacle, it was a beautiful place. We had a barn, I can't remember the woman's name, but Mr. Torres kind of set it up. This was something that the student council, when they ran for student council earlier in the year, two of the student council members were running for president and said they wanted to go back to have, they talked about their class day, having at Canterbury Lake Park or some water, water park. The other thing they talked about was having this dinner dance at a venue rather than in a gym. And, you know, we were kind of pushing back, pushing back, pushing back, but really the student council was the one that pushed it. They raised the money, they did so through some of their dances that they had. Again, I want to thank both Lori Doherty and Secana, PTO and our Little Compton Education Foundation. The kids didn't pay a cent to go, it was free and the food was fantastic from Venda Ravioli in Providence. Just well-attended by our kids, we had a great time and the first time, I think, in three years I've seen boys dance, because they haven't danced any of the dances we have. So, a lot of fun and I want to thank Mr. DeLeo and Ms. Miller as well, you know, being their class advisors, kind of pointing them in the direction, just a good opportunity for them. That is everything that's going on.
I mean, that's just the last, like, that's amazing, that would be a robust.
As we know, Friday is awards night, awards day, awards afternoon, and then the kids will be promoted on graduation on Monday.
Well, just awesome and Secana PTO, Mr. DeLeo, thank you for all you do on organizing these events, it's really a community effort. I know you're a DC regular, so it's awesome to have your guidance down there. It's just such a great, awesome slides, even put in today's event, I mean, who's behind that?
Not me.
I was gonna say, that is.
Ms. Godrow, the kids are all thinking.
Oh, that's great.
She takes the pictures and puts them up.
That's excellent, thank you Principal McKinnon. Oof, tough act to follow tonight, Dr. Mitchell, that is a robust presentation from Principal McKinnon there.
That is, but I can do the cupid shuffle and I did it yesterday and he cannot, so there it is. Mr. DeLeo will corroborate. I'm just going to do a quick update regarding two of our initiatives that support kids and families and those who serve them, teachers. We, I want to thank this committee for voting to allow us to implement AHA healthier. It has been game-changing for our families, we are in a rural community and sometimes coming home after work and then schlepping somewhere else for a child who needs support, social, emotional or psychological support, is daunting. And so, we have several families taking advantage of. And so we have several families taking advantage of Hazel Health. And in the state, there were three hundred and ten students that had been referred. Eighty-four percent of referrals come from staff. There have been two hundred and fifty-five visits completed between at school and at home in the state. Tough reasons for referral to Hazel Health is anxiety, fear, just withdrawn and struggling in school. So Ms. Miller did report out to me and do sit on the Hazel Health team, as does our IT Director, Mr. Gabriel, and also Principal McKinnon. It was a lot to implement. We had a huge checklist that we had to work through in terms of sharing data, et cetera. So your vote, your kickstarted a very complex process because we are sharing data with a third party, student data. And it has exceeded our expectations. Another program I want to talk about briefly is the Educated Peer Support Program. We had twenty teachers on average participate monthly. And each session was about forty-five minutes long and facilitated by Mary Elizabeth Miller, who was the clinician in SW, and also Carla DiGiulio, our Guidance Counselor, Behavioral Specialist. They were trained by Wharton Business Professionals, professors, in how to implement a peer support structured program for educators. And this is year two. Last year was not optional. Teachers had to participate. That was part of the Ben Buren Grant that funded it. That was the funding source that did bite and thought it was a great idea. They visit us, visited us onsite and we moved forward with that. This year it was optional and we had twenty of our supply staff every single month participate. And it's quite structured. It's not just, okay, we're going to go in there and just, you know, chill and kibitz. There's a check-in, usually a mood meter, which is from the Yale University Framework Ruler. That three of our staff members attended last summer, including Principal McKinnon. There's a mindfulness activity, about one to three minutes, could be stopped and be breath. It takes about three seconds. Then there's a book chapter or an excerpt or article or a TED Talk that supports this month's theme. Then there's an open discussion and a case study. It really is sort of like, you know, like a masterclass in how to collaborate on mindfulness, you know, and supporting each other as educators. Educators give so much of themselves and getting support from their peers rather than an outside, even though we have an employee assistance program. It's very good, well administered and robust. But getting support and being able to share in a way that is structured and intentional just results in such positive outcomes. And we can see that with a boost in morale, with a boost in attendance at our exercise classes, et cetera. Our educators' health and wellbeing and our students' and families' health and wellbeing are basically central to everything we do here. So just wanted to report out on those two programs, Hazel Health, thank you for your vote, and the Educated Peer Support Program. We did survey the teachers and we were blown away by the positive feedback, how much they love it because they're with each other and it is facilitated by one of them. Admin has nothing to do with it. We don't even know what goes on there, you know, should we? We know what the framework is about and, and the structure, but that's where it ends. And we think it's a great model and we have other districts interested in it. So.
Thank you. And thank you for filling us in on the Hazel Health. I was curious to know, as I think many of us were, how that could be a resource to our families? And I'm glad to hear that it is being used not only here but throughout the state. So good work on that and all those that are involved in making that come to fruition.
Mary Elizabeth Miller is the point person on that. Excellent.
Now the cleanup hitter.
Well, as everybody knows, the Penitent Town Meeting is next Tuesday and I would encourage everyone to show up. Come early. Other than that, we're in our, going into our twelfth month, obviously, and a lot of those numbers we're, I'm estimating to be conservative during the year. You know, I'm not seeing those unusual items occurring that would require the use of that. So we're looking right now at roughly about seventy-one thousand dollar surplus for the year. We do have the one more month. This, this month will be from a cash flow point, a big month. We have the three summer payrolls that are paid to the teachers. So those will come in this month, but I've accounted for those in the projection. So I'm anticipating that we should finish the year probably at least around fifty thousand in terms of our surplus for the, for the current year.
So you said that the, what was the seventy-one thousand dollar surplus? And I'm sorry, you just said seventy-one thousand and you said fifty thousand.
Yeah, we'll probably have some payables that might come in towards the end of the year that, so I'm projecting seventy-one, but I'm going to be conservative and give you fifty.
Right. And originally, we were thinking that there was going to be a deficit, right, at the end of the year? And that deficit was, wasn't that like around forty to sixty?
It was probably close to sixty, yeah.
Sixty. So we did a, on your conservative numbers, almost a hundred thousand dollar swing, right?
Electric bill?
No. I got one today for Meeting, Meeting House Lane. It's like a hundred and forty-three dollars, which had zero on it because the virtual net metering credits offset that. Having got a bill for the virtual net metering credit, so those credits, we're going to have to pay sixty-five percent of those credits that have been applied to that account. But that's not a big number at this point in time. So I've got enough in the budget to cover that. The main account, I haven't got a bill for, but I haven't got a bill since October. And Rhode Island Energy, because this happened, we, we had a building in Lincoln that was on solar. It became operational in November. I just got the bills for the six months and of course, it's the worst six months for solar. So I wound up getting a bill for probably close to sixty thousand dollars.
Not here.
Not here at Lincoln. So I'm assuming that they're still going through. Rhode Island Energy is looking at these bills closely and they have to go through a different review process because they're a little bit more complicated and they just don't, they just can't send them out. So I'm anticipating we should probably get a bill soon, which will cover the retro period. But we also have the virtual net metering. So there were three credits that went into this past bill. So that probably would have been through March maybe or so, or April on those credits. So we're going to see those virtual net metering credits go against that account. And then we'll have the solar as well. That, that energy, I believe, is being sold to Rhode Island Energy.
Yeah. And then my other question, any movement on the rebate on a solar project?
Yes.
So Lori says it's going to go through, so.
Did you?
No. What happened was, we were talking, I was talking with the auditors that were using the town. And she had a client that did get it approved and filed the tax return. So I'm hoping that we would get it approved. I did talk to Ride in the event that we don't have, and we've got to submit our housing aid reports by July fifteenth. So if I don't have a number from the IRS so I can file the tax return at that point in time, what I'll do is I'll apply for the housing aid. And there's a mechanism that we would have to repay that, assuming that we get that money back. So, but I think that we are seeing some activity in that area. So I'm, I'm hoping that we'll get the, I think it's one sixty-eight that we're looking at.
Excellent. And thank you for your work with the town.
Thank you.
All right. Onto the committee reports. Policy Subcommittee Report. Myself and Amy are going to be meeting in the coming months to discuss, amongst other policies are tuition policy and possibly implementing some of the suggestions that were made by the committee in terms of a longer term plan, maybe incentivization for the families. Stay tuned to that. If you are a district parent, you might want to attend. And now Portsmouth School Committee Liaison Report. Over to Mark.
Thank you, Chair. From the this month's meeting, spring athletics ended really strong with the Boys Lacrosse Team winning the Division Two Championships. Junior Prom, Prom and After Prom were a big success and Friday was graduation. At the meeting, student council members shared some emotional and moving words regarding the loss of their classmate. Past weekend, Providence Portsmouth High School will benefit from a roof replacement and electrical panel replacement over the summer. They voted to approve some contracts for substitute teachers and other auxiliary folks during that meeting. I just wanted to thank Dr. Mitchell for your diligence in communicating and supervising around the events of the weekend, including my request to find out more about mental health and wellness opportunities, which there were a lot of for our students and families here, as well as in Portsmouth in the aftermath of those sad events, for which one of our students was involved and is recovering miraculously, thankfully. That just about does it.
Yeah, to just piggyback on Mark's comments, Principal McKinnon, Lori, thank you for jumping into action. I mean, I don't know what time it was or when it was, but you had reached out to me to say that the wheels were in motion. At that point, I went to try to find more information and I couldn't. So the fact that you guys were in the trenches, as Mark said, and, and providing resources to the families in need, both here and then you shared with us and the entire committee that you offered our support staff to Portsmouth. It just, it's awesome that a community can come together for not only the good times, but when the difficult times present as well. And for us to have that bond with Portsmouth, it is, it is quite invaluable, the partnership that we have with them. So, and Mark, thank you. Over to Ms. Sue Chase for the Wellness Subcommittee Report.
Well, the Wellness Committee met on May twenty-second and Dr. Mitchell has already updated you on the, the education, Educated Peer Support Groups and also the Hazel At Home Based Therapy Sessions, which it's so wonderful that we have those things in place. So we also had an update from Jessica Higgins and Nicole Gay about the Farm and Sea to School Program. And I noticed that they recently sent out a survey to, to Parents Square asking people what they knew about the program and also inviting parents and community members to join on a subcommittee that would help promote those programs better. So I invite everyone who's interested in that to, it'll start in the fall. We'll probably have a meeting in September because I think we're a little behind the eight ball. We're supposed to have five meetings a year and so we might have to squeeze a few in, in the fall. But, and then Amy McLean updated us on the oasis out there. And with it still being light, you can see there's some great work going out there. Every class has a row. I think early on, when you walk out, the kindergartners were out there with Ms. Carla Woodhouse planting flowers, but those vegetables. And Amy did, and I know that she just put out a, she was talking about some heavy duty weeding that is needed to be done out there. And so she's inviting people on June twentieth, between eight AM and two thirty PM, if they would like to help weed that, especially the stinging metals. So, and then we will also, Karen Weatherall from the Rhode Island Healthy Schools Coalition was with us and we will be doing an assessment of our wellness policy in the near future. So that's about, oh, and I want to always thank the Secana PTO for all the love they share with us in so many areas. And that's about all I have.
Beautiful, Sue. And the stinging metals. Is there a lot of it there?
Well, yeah, Amy said there were a lot and I guess it makes very good tea. So anyone.
Makes very, it's in swelling hands, I can tell you that, if you're not careful. Thank you, Sue. Town Recreation Committee Report. Mark.
Thank you again. Couple of things to report on. The first on my list is the speaker and sound system has been installed at Veterans Field. That's thanks to the work of the school committee and Wilbur McMahon School. Many volunteers, a lot of folks were involved in getting that done. And Mr. Jonathan Gabriel, who volunteered his time to install a what is reported to be a very well functioning sound system out there.
Very robust.
So that was some volunteer work, which is amazing. Thank you again, Mr. Gabriel. Also, every Wednesday in the month of July, we will be doing basketball for all ages under the lights at the court over there from seven thirty to nine thirty. So everyone's welcome, adults, kids, summer folks. And I also just wanted to take a second to, oh, well, also there is the AED machine, which has been, the site has been chosen and is, is imminent. Its installation is imminent over at Veterans Field, solar powered. It seems to have been approved all the way through. So it's just a question of getting it installed at this point, which should happen soon. And also just to point everyone to littlecomptonri.org forward slash community, forward slash recreation for a peek at the calendar of events, things that are going on with LC three fifty and all of that and our new portal on the town website. And there'll be some forums and it just keeps for, for usage of fields and buildings that can be picked up here at the school and at Town Hall. And it just keeps getting better and better. So definitely take it to that page. And yeah, everything else is going along pretty well. We'll see, see everyone at the, at the meeting on Tuesday regarding some of the bigger projects.
Awesome, Mark. And it will be a very busy summer with the LC three fifty, the art installations. Yep. The summer rec programming. There's a lot on the calendar. Put a time to be alive. Cowherdship Subcommittee Report. Myself and Michael will be meeting, Carolyn is no longer here. Maybe the. Oh, I'm sorry. Twenty-seven? Okay. Okay. And we will discuss the Vogel, Wilson, Combs. All of it, all of them. I'm trying to think who else is in there, but nonetheless, those are the, that's the meeting that's here. And we thank those families for their continued contributions to our graduating team. Negotiation Subcommittee Report. Our next meeting is tentatively in July. That's all I have for that. And then action items. Item ten-one, consider, discuss and vote to approve the superintendent contract. What other verbage should I say? As discussed with the remaining, with the same salary and.
The, so the, the contract, I have it here. This contract that you saw on executive session, you can motion for approval of that contract. That's all you need to say.
All right. Motion for approval of the superintendent contract as presented. Salute. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
No.
And one no. So motion carries four to one. And we'll just get a little background, but we'll just get, consider, discuss and vote to approve the school bus transportation services with first student for the fiscal year twenty-six through twenty-eight. There was a kerfuffle with Ocean State. There was a kerfuffle with Ocean State and Mr. McNamee will take us through that. They pulled out, but first student is right there to pick up the slack.
Well, so Ocean State Transportation had, when I contacted them to let them know that the bid had been awarded, it was the Wednesday before I contacted them. So we had 10 days under the contract to let him know of the bid award. That was the same day he found out that he bid on Tivonin, he didn't get Tivonin. So I think when, because we did this, kind of a joint bid with Middletown, Tivonin, Little Compton and Bristol Warren. So I think he was looking at the Tivonin and Little Compton as, as one. So when he did bid on it, I think he, and again, his, the bid difference was about 55,000. And he did indicate to me as we discussed the fact, because now he didn't know where he was going to park the buses. He always thought, he said, can I park them in town? I said, not if he'd want to get run out of town. So he had originally thought that if he got the Tivonin job, he would, you know, use the Tivonin bus yard. So in that proximity, obviously it's better from our standpoint. So the more we discussed, the more the impression I got, you know, that he'd do it because he did bid on it and the bid did say, low bid, we get it. All the bidders on that, there were three bidders, first student, Ocean State and the bus company out of Fall River. We gave, the contract did specifically say you had to be contracted in Rhode Island, but we allowed them to bid so we could have at least another number in there. But they were the higher, they were the higher of all the three, so. So with that, and they were basically out of it. So at that point, it was, I talked to our consultant and we both agreed that at that point in time, it would probably be best if we took another look at first student, assuming that first student would do it for the same price as Ocean State. And when I talked to Tony Marigo from Ocean State, that's what he said. He said, if it's going to cost you some money, it's not a big contract, I'll do it. But, you know, he didn't have his heart in it at this point in time. So, and when you transfer busing to a new bus company, it can be, it can be a nightmare sometimes. And so all those things taken into consideration and the fact that we were going to get the same pricing for first student, it, it made some sense to, to kind of move over to, to first student.
Okay. I mean, it is what it is. Ocean State's not going to serve us. The Fall River contract was the highest. And first student currently serves us, will continue to serve us at the rate that was the low bid.
The Ocean State.
That Ocean State was awarded. Any questions?
I do. So John, this just came to me. I would have asked you this earlier. There is something that's working through the legislation, I believe, about the new, I'll say cameras on the buses and the, how does that play into effect with? Because that was something that was specified that Ocean State was going to be providing, that they specified existing buses would have cameras and then the new buses would have more cameras. And it was my understanding that there's something that's coming out. So how does that play into effect and how does that cover us?
Well, they have to comply, and the specs are the same for all. So they, they responded to those specifications. They couldn't change those specs. So when the consultant puts those together, those are the specifications which basically Sean uses as his contract. So they have to comply with that in there. Now, if that standard is lower than what's going to be required by the state, then they would have to upgrade that. However, since they didn't know about that when they bid on that, that could be some additional cost if it's, if it's a higher standard. If it's a lower standard, they have to comply with the higher standard of the contract.
So are you familiar with the requirement that's coming that they want?
So I'm not, I'm not familiar with the precise requirement, Mike. Okay, well, I'm not familiar with the precise requirement, but as John McNamee laid out, the state law is, the state law is when the General Assembly adopts it, if it goes into effect immediately, then we have to abide by it. Bus company have to abide by it. There may be an instance where that means additional cost. We have a discussion about what that looks like. If it meets the bid specs or they're able to do it without additional costs, great, we all move on. But the state law is what it is and regardless of what we have in a contract, you, the bus company is going to have to adhere to the state law. So yes, in, in short, you would have to meet those requirements.
Be interested to what John, I mean, that's fine. I understand.
This came up in the IP sector as well. The, some districts do handle a little bus thing, the end of technology and the classes. So it is, I believe it was 2027 is when the law goes into effect. Really manufactured buses, existing buses will be retrofitted by 2032, which I think is passed.
Well, outside the term of this contract. And that's.
Free up and wait.
Often that is the case because the General Assembly, when it passes laws, has to acknowledge that people need time to react and can reconfigure themselves. So it is not often that when a law is passed that it immediately goes into effect.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve the school bus transportation services with first student for fiscal year 26 through fiscal year 28?
I'm sorry. One thing that I brought up to Sean Pryor is that we have on record a, a vote that we approved the other transportation. There's nothing in our motion saying that we rescind it.
It, you're approving a contract that's going to supersede the other contract. If you would like to have your motion with the words rescind the prior award, you can do that.
Okay.
You, you moved to rescind the, the prior bid award and.
Send the previously approved contract to Ocean. What was it, Ocean?
Award, not contract.
Or what was this, Ocean State?
Ocean State.
Okay, so do I have a motion to rescind the previously approved contract to Ocean?
Award.
Award, excuse me. Award to Ocean State Transportation.
And award the.
And approve the school bus transportation services award to first student for fiscal year 26 through 28.
That's the motion. So someone, all you have to say is so moved.
So moved.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Are there any requests for information from the administration or legal counsel from the school committee? All right, with nothing being said, I will consider a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Aye. Carries. Thank you all. Enjoy the summer nights and the.